Good evening. This is the Planning Board meeting of September 8th, 2020. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. So the first on the agenda tonight is, we have an A&R plan. It's approval not required, Seven James Breach Way, Jeffrey and Gloria Olson. It's map 33 lot 8-C2-R, Webby Engineering Associates. See if somebody's here from Webby for that? Oh, okay.
No, I'm here, I'm Jeff Olson.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me.
So do we have that plan? Is this the one that's in front of us here?
Right in front of us.
So if you could just stand up and if you could just tell us what's going on with this?
Absolutely. My neighbor has some property in my front yard, and I'm gonna buy it off him, about 16,000 square feet. And it fits right into my yard. He agreed to sell it to me. So I had it surveyed out, and we agreed upon a price. Very nice gentleman.
Okay.
They told me these are steps to go through, which I'm not really familiar with. It's forestry property, so it's not just a typical cut-up and transfer.
Yeah.
So he filled out the, we filled out the form A, and I submitted that with this plan.
Okay. So, so all you're doing is, you're a lot, so you're Jeffrey Olson?
I am.
And, oh, okay, so then you also own, and you own what, 33-8-C2-R? And, see, oh, and then the, and then the person that you're getting this one from is possible, 37-1-L-R, Bayside Agricultural Inc.? Okay. So all you're doing is just buying a piece of that, that piece out there?
Yes.
Okay. And your, that lot has existed for quite a while?
Yeah, very much so.
Okay. Because it doesn't have frontage on the street, but that was before?
Yeah, it's accessible, its frontage is on James Breach Way, which is off of High Street.
Okay. Where's James Breach, oh, okay, I see, 20-foot right-of-way, known as James Breach Way. Okay. And that's the way it's been for, for many years now?
Yeah, almost 40 years.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any questions by any of the Planning Board members? So this is a, this is a lot that has existed for a number of years, is just buying a small piece of, because there was a shed that you had on that property, so decided to buy a piece of property, so that instead of moving the shed, you bought a piece of property?
Exactly.
All right. All right. Okay, does anybody have any questions? Side, this side? So on a form A, we don't approve, we, let's see, what is?
Endorse.
Endorse, that's right. So I'll entertain a motion to endorse the plan for Seven James Breach Way.
Second one?
So we need a motion first.
Motion as stated.
Okay. And, so that was Mr. Shea?
Second.
And Ellen, no, I guess Ellen, or, we'll say Ellen's second that.
Sure, no fights.
So we had a motion, a second, those in favor? Aye. Foesed? All right. Well, good luck with that property and your shed.
Very nice gentleman. That's Peter Beaton?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I've heard of him, yep.
Yeah, he is the real deal, very nice man.
All right. Well, I'm glad everything worked out well for you.
Great services.
So we'll have these signed tonight and have them in the permitting office.
Okay. Thank you, folks, very much.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, we'll just keep these here, make sure we get them going tonight. Okay, we have a formal presentation tonight, next on the agenda, and it's 223 Meadow Street. It's, it's a large ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation, Ironwood Renewables, Hamilton Carrier. And if you could explain this, Jim?
Yeah, so we met, we met back in June, I think we met together. And so, Ironwood is new to Carver. They have a proposed project on Meadow Street, and then they kind of asked to come, just to give an informal presentation to the board before filing, in case there are any comments on, you know, that they could use in shaping their project.
Sure. And we brought some sort of preliminary schematics as a draft. We thought prior to submitting anything formal to the town, to get an idea of sort of what your expectations might be in a filing, what you want to see, just introduce the developer, so you know who you're dealing with, I guess.
Okay, so, yeah, so I just want to bring this up, because this isn't a formal presentation of anything. You will come back later on with the project, and all the abudders will be notified around the property.
Yes, so we thought it might be beneficial to solicit your feedback prior to finalizing, you know, any type of a layout, and also let Ironwood kind of introduce themselves in the project. Obviously, you've had solar in the community before, but never with this development.
Yes, so my name's Hamilton Carrier, representing Ironwood Renewables. Ironwood Renewables is out of Alaska, out of Louisiana. Like Jim said, we are new to Carver, so I know we have some new Planning Board members recently, so we wanted to get to know you guys, see how you run this process. Based on the layout, we're looking to, we have an option to lease approximately 19 acres from Keith House. As you can see, it's proposed probably a 14-acre actual solar array. We do have a vegetation plan in place, as well as we have also notified the abudders out of June, late July, or wasn't it in July?
We have.
It was in July. There was three direct abudders, all seemed very open to the idea. They all actually passed out in a butter form that we have, that I will probably go out tomorrow, reintroduce myself, and maybe have them sign the form, just, you know, acknowledging that they're okay with the project, and I think it'll make the process a little bit more smoother with you guys. So if you guys have any questions on the plan that we presented, any suggestions, we'd love to hear it. We're open to making your life easier, any way we can.
So is this gonna be a ground-mounted solar photovoltaic field?
We brought, you know, we brought this that I've worked on and permitted, that are built, sort of in other parts of New England, that provide kind of typicals. Obviously, this will be screened through trees, so having by, it won't be visible, but this sort of demonstrates kind of the driven pile style, along with the purlins, the racking, you know, the agricultural fence that would surround the facility. But as you can see on the plan, you know, there'll be substantial visual screening around all four sides of the site. So, and we thought this, obviously, you have seen solar here in Carver, so some of this may be repetitive. I passed out sort of frequently asked questions for those who may be new to the planning board and not familiar with some of the typical questions we get regarding decommissioning, glare, noise, things of that nature, so.
So this is gonna be a ground-mounted, it's not gonna be over a cranberry bog then, it's just gonna be over?
Yeah, it's just an open building. Right now, it's just basically tree land, it's just a bunch of trees, so.
Oh, so there are trees on the property, and some of it's open too, or is it just all trees?
A little open area, most of it is trees.
So we're gonna have to clear it all?
We're gonna be clearing the middle section. Dell can go more into it, but we're gonna be leaving the outside, basically existing vegetation there, for the most part.
Yeah, it's partially forested, it's been cut in the past, but there are some trees that would need to be removed.
Oh, okay. All right.
How many acres?
The proposed project is, you know, 14.7 acres. And I think for the frontage, it was required to have 150 feet. We're right at 150 feet. We will have that resurfaced, just a double check.
Okay.
Distance from the bogs? The bogs are back here. Dell, do you know how far they are from those?
At least 200 feet. And that's from any, at the edge of any activity. I think the panels themselves are probably closer to 250.
So you haven't gone before about conservation or anything with this?
We did sort of have a preliminary meeting.
Oh, okay.
Obviously, there's a lot more to do here. We expect to be talking with the town quite a bit more. We just wanted to introduce ourselves and introduce the project.
All right.
So on the little left-hand corner there in the, in the red, is that supposed to be wetland, or?
How many entrances will there be into this project?
Just one.
There will be this entrance right here? The top one?
So generally, when we go through something like this, I can just say, with a lot of the solar companies that we've dealt with, the ones that, that we have had the best working relationship with, the ones that do go to the neighbors that are nearby, and you have, you know, take a look and see if screening is gonna be needed, and, yeah, it is good to speak with the neighbors on something like just this, to make sure. We'll go through the bylaw to see if you have to have 100% screening, or if it, I forget, now, we'll have to look through the bylaws, but we'll have to make it acceptable, you know, screening. And we do try to protect the people from, from the solar panels, the look, you know, so that they don't have to look at them, as, as much as bylaws allow.
Yeah, we had, you know, very positive feedback from them. You know, as long as, you know, they basically said, as long as we don't see it, you know, it doesn't bother us.
Yeah.
Basically, it says, solar seems to be good neighbors, because they're not gonna give them any, any problems, just the panels, so, seem, they seem pretty open to it. I'm gonna go back tomorrow and speak with them again, possibly sign that waiver that you guys have.
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't pass that out?
Yeah, so, basically, we're gonna provide a notarized letter along with our application that, you know, demonstrates the outreach that we've done. You know, they've seen a copy of this plan prior to, who else circulating it here? And I think, as you noted, it's really important to have them on board with the project.
Yep. Also, we do, the Planning Board generally does a site walk, you know, after our first official meeting with the, here at the Town Hall with the neighbors and the abudders and everything. And, so that way, they, if you could mark out the edges of the, the areas that you're gonna clear, so, you know, we could just take a look and see, we could, what, what that's gonna look like, to, you know, from, from the neighbor's point of view.
We could provide, you could state, you know, edge of panels, and we could bring, you know, GPS technology, so we could walk you right to the river limit of clearing, so you can see exactly where different pieces of project infrastructure will fall, once we get this designed, you know, a bit further down the road.
So, so as long as it meets all the requirements, and, you know, I think that, that we should, you know, it should be okay, well, like I say, we will take a site walk out there, once you, you know, mark out the perimeter, and we'll see how it affects, we, you know, we look and see what neighbors are being affected, and, and what's, you know, if it's gonna affect the neighborhood. We'll take a look at the heights of the panels, too. I don't know, anything that you have to say, Jim?
Well, these guys came at a good time after one of our projects that did not go all the way through their process, they withdrew, but I was able to provide them with the lessons learned from that particular project, so that they could come in and, you know, hit it off right, right at the, you know, from the beginning.
I would like to see the 65 and 100-foot delineation zones, and I don't know if you have to go through the CONCOM to get an abbreviated notice of intent before coming to see us, just to get ahead of the curve on that.
Also, the other, before this even comes to the Planning Board generally, it goes to Jim, and then all the departments, like the fire department, police department, they have a department head meeting, they take a look at this, and if everybody agrees, one of the big departments that we care, you know, take particular attention to, any of their comments, is the fire department, and we want to know that they have access around this field for fire purposes, so, and, so, you know, they'd have to take a look at the plans and see, once things are marked out, you know, they may want to take a look out there, too. They want to know what type of roads you're gonna provide around the perimeter of the project, so that they can, you know, get their fire trucks, or any kind of firefighting equipment out there if needed. So, those, you know, that department's very important to the Planning Board, their input. And so, once all the department heads, you know, DPW and everybody else will look at it, then it'll come to us for the final Planning Board review and site walk, and so, you know, it'll take, you know, at least two meetings anyway. And, so that's pretty much how we do it. Did we lift anything out?
We also sent referral to our engineering, consulting engineer, who rules out the technical requirements of the project.
Is it, is it possible, kind of as we're in the early stage of design, to get input or feedback from, say, the fire department, on what their preferences might be, or should we propose something a little bit more final, and then incorporate their feedback later?
Yeah, I think that's probably the best way. They don't like, they don't like to get involved too early.
Sure.
Because they have a project where the outcome was frequently going to them, asking for advice on, and they, they said, well, can you file an application first, and then we can react to it?
And we can base it on maybe past interactions with fire departments as well, some of their preferences.
Yeah, I mean, Jim could, if you talk to Jim, maybe you could go over some of the preferences of the widths and dimensions of the roads the fire department may, may want out there, so they get the equipment out. But, yeah, they like to see finalized plan, and then they can, you know, tell you if that's what they want or not, but, as long as, they like to access the perimeter, so, and we also like to have a, I don't know if this is gonna be fenced, or, will this be fenced, yeah, so they'd like to have a, some sort of a lock?
Lock box.
Yeah, lock box, and then they'll, so that the fire department, police department will have a key or a way to get in through that if need be for an emergency.
Pretty standard.
So, anybody else have any other questions or comments? No? Hopefully, this won't be too controversial, and we'll, we'll see what happens.
Well, we really appreciate you making time to sort of hear us before we really file much, it helps.
Is the, how's the topography in this area? Is it up and down, or is it pretty flat?
So, you know, grading will not be required, and so it will, you know, as it lies today, it's very, very consistent.
Any of your neighbors that might be at a higher elevation?
No, we've been all around the site, and I mean, it, it's, it really, the primary visibility, you know, or lack of visibility will be immediately adjacent. And a site visit would certainly help illustrate that to the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that.
Excuse my lack of knowledge, but who, who benefits by the solar? Is it the town, or is it specific homes?
So this is being submitted into the Massachusetts SMART program, which there are a ton, there's a ton of information kind of in that.
Yeah, read that.
Frequently asked questions packet, but the intended benefit is Massachusetts right there.
The town gets the taxes based on the, the valley will be?
Yes.
Solar arrays, and they are really expensive.
There's that, too.
I've done a couple of these.
So that's, I mean, the, the town does benefit, the taxpayers in town do benefit from the taxes from, from these things. It's, it's not a subdivision where you have to provide services, or schools, or fire or police generally, it's, it's just a passive solar field, and, you know, although this has nothing to do with the Planning Board, but these are the benefits that, that happen when you, when you have the solar fields. As long as you can, you know, make the people happy that, that live around these things. And that's where we run into problems.
Is there also a plan for future storage?
I don't think at the current time.
Not, or no?
I, I'll hear right, site, site selection and everything. Doing your diligence upfront, talking to the right people, making sure it's, it's a good fit, it's really important.
Yeah, John, I don't know if he brought, just brought this up, but, yeah, is there like a battery storage unit in this? So this is just gonna collect the sun, make electricity, and then it's immediately gonna go out in the grid?
Right onto the tree.
So it's not gonna be stored on site? But there will be transformers or something like that?
Small inverters.
Yeah.
Be an equipment pad for some small equipment, but the project is fairly small, it doesn't require substation or transmission infrastructure.
Does it make a humming noise, or?
It's about, at a max, most of the equipment that's rated within these facilities is about 63 dB A at the point of generation, so as soon as you're about 30 feet away, it's hard to discern. You know, conversation, if I start to raise my voice, you're getting close to 60, 60 dB A, might be, I think at its loudest, you know, I've heard it compared to like an air window, air conditioner, something like that, those might be around 70. They're, they're very quiet, and, you know, the noise that's generated primarily occurring during daylight hours, when you have traffic and other noise at night, you know, they're very quiet.
So this is interesting, that this is, this is one of the first solar fields that we have, was a ground-mounted, so this is, the state is, is allowing this again, and so now we've gone to the raised solar panels, so they can be farmed underneath, and, but, so we're going back to the, to the original solar field that we started out with.
Exactly. The SMART program just expanded a little bit. We've had this project under contract for about a year now, but a lot of hoops and hurdles to go through, but, you know, once we kind of got past this, we figured we'd want to present it to you guys. But, yeah, it's just a standard ground-mounted solar facility, no cranberry bogs involved,
Well, I mean, it looks like the type of solar facility that, you know, wouldn't be so offensive to neighbors. It's not on the cranberry bogs, the neighbors who have views of the cranberry bog is not gonna see this. It's gonna be surrounded by a buffering of woods all around, and it seems like you only have a two or three homes that are affected.
There's three direct abudders. One of the abudders is actually the landowner's mother, so, we had a great conversation with her, for about an hour, she is, she's awesome, but, she's very open to it. She wouldn't even, her, I guess her son didn't even tell her about it, so we weren't informing her. But, no, that was awesome. And then the abudders right here by the cranberry bogs, they own the cranberry bogs, son and father, they basically say, you know, as long as it doesn't bother us making any noise, you know, we're, we're open to it.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, we're definitely gonna work on those signatures, I think it'll be a great asset to have, and, of course, when we do a sidewalk, we'll invite them as well.
Well, generally, when we do the site walk, it's just Planning Board members.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you want to take the neighbors out later, you know, you're welcome to do that, but it's just for the Planning Board, just to view what, what's out there, so, but it's only a couple of neighbors, so that's good, you could just take them, and they'd only be concerned of what they're gonna see, just off to the rear of their property, anyway, so, which looks like it's pretty well wooded.
Yeah.
But, the, the problems that we do have, and I can understand some of the neighbors being upset, is when the houses are elevated on hills, and they're overlooking the solar projects, and it makes it very difficult to screen because of the elevation. And, and then they were also on the cranberry bogs, which, people that own the property around it enjoyed the view of the cranberry bogs, and so it was taken away by the, the solar panels.
You can see a lot further over open ground, and when there's trees.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But, yeah, Jim had mentioned that to us at our meeting, so we did take note of that. I was at our walk, and I went and met the abudders, just to see what we could see from their houses, and it was, you basically, you only saw trees, so.
Okay. Well, I think, well, I thank you for coming here and showing us this project, and if you speak to Jim, he can guide you through the steps.
Sure.
And, yeah, you'll have to go to before conservation, and before the Planning Board, and work with both boards on this, but it doesn't seem like, by looking at this, that it's gonna be a real difficult project. But we'll, we'll see when we do the site walk.
When the room fills up, then we'll see.
Well, thanks for setting us up, Jim, and meeting with us earlier, I'm sure we'll be in touch with you all more. Really appreciate you listening to us.
Interesting.
Okay.
If you have questions, I'll, we'll answer them eventually.
All right. Well, thank you for all the information that you provided for us, too, it was very helpful.
And, you know, if you're curious, that packet?
I'm gonna read through the.
Has some really good information. Massachusetts has done a really great job, kind of leading the way across New England as far as solar projects are concerned, and I do projects in Maine, and Hampshire, Massachusetts, and I hand out that packet whenever I go to a town meeting and people have questions.
Thank you for bringing that.
Well, thanks, Massachusetts, for putting it together.
You're a great state. Well, as a, as an owner of a ground-mounted system, definitely check with the Conservation Committee.
Sure. Now, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you.
Have a good evening.
We'll see you again, I'm sure.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So that takes care of that. That was the informal presentation. So we have, the next for discussion is the transfer of developmental rights, and this is the discussion of the next steps that we're gonna take in order, and one of the steps is to, we're gonna have a, start up a committee, so, I don't know if you would like to speak about this, Jim?
Sure. So getting back to the 2017 master plan, there are a number of recommendations for different changes to the kind of land use bylaws, one of which is the transfer development bylaw, which, reading the 2017 plan and listening to SERPAD, and a sending and receiving area map has not been adopted yet, although there was quite a bit of work done, so this, so one of the things to be looking at that, and just trying to figure out, you know, I think the criteria already there, it's just a matter of taking the steps to approve a transfer development rights map, which is one of the requirements in the bylaw. So, and then, and then from there, look at other aspects of the bylaws, you know, they recommend looking at the open space, you know, conservation subdivision bylaw, you know, looking at the village district bylaws, and, you know, looking at those recommendations and determining, you know, if the town should take any action on that, to, you know, change densities, or, you know, make those bylaws more usable. One of the comments I have, too, is that One of the comments I have too is that on the conservation subdivision bylaw is that part of it requires approving inclusionary housing as part of it. But what I've seen typically is that there's maybe one or two units at most being created from these projects. And there's kind of a cost to the developer because they have to go and hire a third party marketing company to help market the affordable units so it's done the right way. And so the, you know, the board may want to look at how can we make it so we can maybe generate more affordable housing, but also decreasing kind of the per unit cost of the cost of marketing that housing. Something to think about. And then Bruce and I, you know, have been kind of talking about it. I think Bruce, you also talked to Will Sinclair about how the solar bylaw committee was set up. But we think maybe we've had, you know, five or six members of this committee, possibly two members of the planning board, and then outreach to, say, the agricultural community who would have a, you know, vested interest in some of these bylaws. You know, select board. We do have Mrs. Fran Mello from the zoning board has already expressed interest in participating. And then maybe some from the select board to kind of come together and then, you know, from different perspectives to come together and, you know, put, you know, study the bylaws, see what needs to be changed, and then putting something forth that, you know, I think that Fall Town Meeting is going to come up. We already have zoning articles that are on there. I'm not sure if we have time enough to study something and put it on for the Fall Town Meeting, but we could at least get the committee together and take a look and see if there's something we could do. We have the applicant, Lauren Tripp, is here from Weathervein. And I know they're eager to get their project going, so I don't know if there's something that, you know, the committee could do to say, okay, is there something we can clarify really fast, but then it still requires, you know, something to be brought forward to town meeting, possibly sometime in October.
We, no, we did have some zoning bylaw changes that we held back from this, the last plan, the town meeting, because it was going to be an abbreviated town meeting. We were going to also look at those, I believe, and see if they.
Yeah, it could be something where.
Needed to be tweaked.
Yeah, are there tweaks that need to be made or are they fine? It was back in early March when the planning board had their public hearings on it. And then the following week, COVID broke out.
So I think, and I'll just throw it out to the planning board members here. But Jim and I discussed that, you know, we could have seven to nine people on the committee. And we kind of advertise this and send out some information to the planning board, not to the select board. And if we, and we could put it on the internet on the town site. And we'll see how we do before our next meeting, how many people have applied or are interested. Of course, these meetings will be open to the public because they're public meetings for everyone. So even though somebody might not be on the committee, they're certainly welcome to come to any of the meetings, any of the time, all of the meetings, and participate. So I, so I think that's what we were planning to do. We'll just put this out, a notification out for people that want to join this committee. So I think tonight, I don't know if there's anybody here on the board that would like to be on the committee, actually. And I was.
It would be, yeah, I mean, it sounds like it's something to be very interesting. It's just a matter of having the spare time available.
Right, right, right.
I think on one year too, you know, the public meetings so that, so if you're not, say, officially on the committee, you can still come and participate when you can, or send in information to the, you know, to my office and we can distribute it to the committee members.
I guess it would be something probably that would meet like once a month or something like that. I think that's how the solar bylaw committee did, maybe once a month or they, we'd have to take a look at, you know, of course, when, when the singer started.
If we're looking to.
How many times?
If we're looking to have something ready for.
Town meeting.
Town meeting in October, then it's going to have to be like a once a week.
Yeah, well.
Just to get going, yeah.
Or a couple of times a week to just get going.
Yeah, we doubt long. So basically, I think you'd need to send something out and get this on the, on the menu. Get it going.
I think by next, next, next meeting, we should have an idea of the makeup and membership.
I think so, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't see how we can, how we would be able to propose any changes for the October meeting. It might have to wait until the April meeting.
It might have to, might have to, yeah, yeah. It all depends, yeah, but I think, I think you're right. I think it's going to take a while to develop, but we'll take a look at that, you know.
So why don't we just send something out and see what we get for who wants to be on it?
Okay, yeah.
At that next meeting, we can say, these are the people, pack them, move it on.
All right. Yes, this is the trip.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Lauren Tripp, Phil Rackett. I am a planner for Weathervein Development. As you know, we've engaged in a discussion about the TDRs and our proposed projects that we have, both on South Meadow and on Silver Street, that have the potential to use the TDR bylaw as kind of a first light of what that would might look like on a small scale. With me tonight is attorney Ed Agley, who's one of the state's leading zoning attorneys. And he's also ironically a former Carver Town Council.
Back in the eighties, I actually was.
In the day.
With Frank Wazoli.
That was before my time, yeah.
So we, you know, we're here tonight because we're excited about the opportunity to continue working with the town. We think that the creation of a, of a committee to look at the long-term opportunities that come with TDR bylaws is, is important. And we're looking to participate with that. I have, myself, have got quite a bit of experience in that. I've actually written TDR bylaws, used them, and spoken statewide, nationally on smart growth and using TDRs as well as other smart growth tools. So it's exciting to see a community stepping up to the plate to make sure they have the right tools to deal with the future growth. Because Carver is really in that precarious spot with two underutilized interchanges and growth pressures that increase year by year. I saw it in Plymouth as the chairman there for 10 years. And I also sat on the Carver Plymouth Wareham Task Force that dealt with the 88 piece project back in the day. We actually got the grants that hired your first full-time planners that created your bylaw that you have today. So I've got a good history here, and I also went to Plymouth Carver Island, which is probably the most important part because when I was a kid, I actually thought Plymouth and Carver were one town. So to me, this is, this is my home turf too. What we are here tonight too, though, is to discuss our next steps with our project, just, you know, you know, in a relaxed atmosphere like it is tonight. And we have a differing opinion on that. And Ed has provided the town manager's office, board selectman, the chair here, and the town planner, with that alternative opinion. And we've also had conversations with Sarah Ed that feel that on the small proposal that we have with the Silver Street, with only being five TDRs, and the specificity that's in the bylaw, that there is a path forward that we could work together on the short term for the smaller part of this proposal. But understanding that in the future, looking at the whole town holistically, that there definitely needs to be a comprehensive, you know, look at the bylaw as well as the other bylaws within it and how they're organized and how they interwork with each other. Because really, to have a good smart growth strategy that's consistent with your town's master plan, all these pieces need to fit together somewhat seamlessly and make your job as the persons who determine whether bylaws are, you know, work within the framework and are advantageous to the benefit and health, safety and welfare of the community, how those, how you have a toolkit and a criteria of priorities and standards that allow you to make those decisions. I have copies of that letter if you'd like to see those. I don't know if they were provided to you tonight or not.
Actually, there are copies in the packets. We have emails now, so Lauren's letter and as well as a memo from Agley mainly in the packet.
And, you know, we understand that perhaps there's an alternate opinion from Town Council. We've yet to see that. We'd like to see that, just in an open discussion. Because, you know, obviously, never tell you, it's rare that any two ways ever agree. And that's how they pay the bills.
My son and I never agree.
So, you know, really, in moving forward, we'd like to hopefully come before the board this next meeting, bring you up to speed on the preliminary plans that we have thus far, to provide different options that can go forward. Because the, the one key thing that we're moving with the, with the affordable houses on Silver Street is, there's two ways we can do that. We're not trying to force anything on this board. We're trying to work with you. We can file that as a non-TDR special permit, just as a 55-plus townhouse development, and not deal with it at all. The only reason we were providing it and only using five TDRs was so that would be a working model so that as we create the committee on the long term, we'd actually be able to go through the motions. You guys could be able to really kick the tires on this thing, and we can kick the tires because we're looking to invest in Carver. We've invested a lot of money and time into Carver. We've got a lot of beliefs that Carver is really going to be a place in the future that's going to be, you know, really a great place, that's going to attract quality businesses and a quality lifestyle here. And, you know, so, so we're willing to put the time in and walk through this with you. So we really want to know what the board thinks is that, do you want us to try to do this example and work with you through it and work with SERPED? I was on the phone with Bill Napoleon today. He feels, he read our opinion. You know, he could like to see the alternate opinion before he makes any decision, but he feels that, you know, there's enough here in the work that they've done in the past with the community that we could work forward on a, in a nice process to move the project forward as is. If we hit an impasse, we can withdraw and file just a regular subdivision. But we'd like to, we'd like at least the chance to work with you with a working model and just, and walk through the process in a very casual, relaxed pace. So that's, that's kind of what we're offering. And, you know, when you create this committee, I mean, we, we have resources. I myself would love to be on that committee to work with you, whether I'm a voting member or just someone who's just there to participate. I've got a lot invested in this, in time and history too, because I worked with Bill Napoleon 20 years ago on that memo that started the TDR bylaw. Yeah, so to me, it's like, I'd like to see it get there before I die. You know, and see it succeed here because Carver, I feel, has a lot of potential. And these are the tools that you need in place to be able to realize that. And, you know, just as an example, and I'll, and I'll digress. In Plymouth, about 10, 15 years ago, we started the process with the Pine Hills development, 55 development. It's now the leading taxpayer in the community, generates $27 million a year in taxes, and it's only half built. And a lot of that was kind of a TDR project where we took 3,000 acres and moved all the development down to an underutilized interchange, just like you have on Route 58 and 44, and just like you have up in the other corner up against Plington and Kingston. Same scenario, underutilized, underdeveloped. It's going to come. Growth is going to come. We had the opportunity to direct that. Now, it's over 10% of our entire budget of over $250 million a year. The project that we're talking about with 80 units that we have proposed so far is going to be somewhere between 15 and 25% of your annual school budget of $24 million, somewhere between $500,000 and $700,000 a year in tax revenue. That's significant, especially now when we're seeing businesses close and the COVID situation is going to hit. We're going to see that in our budgets in the next few years. So we would like to keep this moving forward so that not only you benefit, but we benefit from it as well, obviously, and, and get these, these jobs and these tax dollars moving in the right direction, but do it in a smart growth, positive development cooperatively with the town. That's why we should be on.
I just have a quick question. Where are these 80 proposed units?
Well, over 60 of them are on South Meadow. That's already a development that's in process. That was a 55-plus development. We've since added a lot, bought, purchased more land around it. We want to see, put in permanent conservation, create recreational space, actually take an old cranberry bog, turn it back into natural wetland, which has never been done before in Carver. We want to be the first to do that. And then we are creating a 55-plus development on Silver Street on a 10-acre place. They'll have over 20 units. Over half of those will be affordable units, of which 20% could be.
Are those the affordable units that you were permitted for the South Carver development? And you're looking to transfer them up to the Silver Street?
That was the concept, to create, to create that so it's closer to the Village Center on Route 58, so it's closer to services and, you know, be able to be more of a pedestrian development.
So have you already received TDR credits for these properties that were already permitted for South Carver that you're looking to transfer up to the Silver Street area?
That was the process that we were hopefully engaging in with you now.
So you're saying that you haven't received any TDR credits for the South Carver project?
We're still in, we're just still in the conceptual preliminary stage of that. So what we were hoping to do is be able to come in front of the board to have a preliminary discussion as it's required under the, under the bylaw. We come in preliminarily to let the board take a look at it, to kick the tires and to tell us if it meets the requirements for sending area as well as the, meets the requirements for receiving area.
Now, is the recreation area that you're proposing open to the public or is it going to be limited to?
It was, it's public trails that would connect the Wade Street area and then the open space that's there. We've also approached the town about the town open space at the end of Wade Street to put that in conservation as well, creating a trail system through there. And then also that we have connectivity to the existing golf course which straddles between Carver and Plymouth. So there's a lot of recreation we use in this area, just natural open space and then active recreation such as the golf amenity. So it seems to lend itself to kind of create a nice amenity there for the golf.
Before we go on, I just want to interrupt. This isn't on the agenda tonight. We're talking about a committee. So we're going, we're going off into the weeds here. And you possibly could get into trouble for all this. So the thing is, is I, I, these people did want to be at our meeting tonight, but talked to Jim and we decided that maybe it would be better if we had a chance to form a committee, take a look at, you know, these overlay districts and stuff and the credits and all that before we go into it. We do have a copy of what you gave us tonight. I'm thinking that maybe we, we will take a look at this and then we can get back to you sometime this week. You know, I'll speak with Jim. Do you, I mean, what are your thoughts? I'm thinking that we're, we're not going to make any decision about this. It's not even on our agenda tonight, but we can take this information that was given to us, go through it, and, and see what additional information, you know, that was presented.
Members have questions or comments, they can, you know, send them to me directly or call me directly.
Because right now, Jim's been going through the records and we've been trying to find out, you know, about the maps and, and stuff like that. And it's been difficulty going back that many years and finding this stuff.
I had the same difficulty.
Yeah.
And then it basically comes down to when you look at what you have, and again, when you read, Ed's opinion is pretty, pretty readable. And it, you know, it speaks directly, not only at mass general laws level, but it brings it down to the local level. Even if there was a map, your bylaw is replete with determining, that it's always a determination of the board. So the map is more of a guiding tool, but then you have all the specificity within it. I mean, this is, this is a zoning discussion on TDR, so I don't think we're, you know, we're not getting in the specificity of any particular project. We're talking generally of what your, what that bylaw allows. It gives you that flexibility, but like I said, we're not forcing your hands to deal with this. What we'd like to do is come to you the next time with a preliminary discussion of what we have. And then just, and perhaps have SERPED there to discuss it in the, in the reel. And then just decide at that point, is it better to like proceed with it with an example? Or should we go just a regular for this particular phase? So we can address our affordable housing that's required, what's done so far. We'll put the bigger project on hold, and we're adding more land. And we're adding more land anyway, so it's going to, it's changing anyway, so we have the time to do that. But we just want to keep the ball moving so that we can proceed forward. Because we are under construction right now, but we're kind of stopped. And, you know, that means I'm putting all our carpenters, all our electricians, you know, asphalt pavers. Everyone's on hold because we're all holding our breath in hopes that we'll at least have some guidance from the town on what direction we can go in and move forward.
Okay, let us take this information tonight. We'll look at it tomorrow. We'll get back to you tomorrow or the next day. And, or you can get in touch with Jim. And we'll try to make a decision as quickly as possible.
I'll pass this on to our town council so they can look at Ms. Engley's letter and other information. And then I can also update it. Spent virtually all day staring at the computer going through all the town meeting records. And I found out that adopted in 2004, amended in 2006, and amended again in 2009. I don't know what they've changed, but that's all I can tell you. And then no one mentioned of a map or adoption of a map. So that's sort of the kind of mystery is, it makes reference to a map, but then there's no map. I've tried reaching out to Jack Hunter. Haven't heard back from him yet, but.
So you're solving a mystery.
Right. Just trying to solve the mystery, see where we're at. And then we can update our council tomorrow as to where I found out so far. And then, you know, they can review the letter and then, you know, make their comments on it.
All right, but one more thing, Mr. Engley and the.
I just got to offer some help. The law requires that the bylaw be filed at the registry of deeds. So you could go to the registry of deeds and find out each change as it went along. I assume they filed them because the state lawsuit you posted.
This is back in 2004.
To the attorney general's office so they would also have amended copies of it.
Unfortunately, the registry of deeds, you can't get in.
Oh, yeah, but you can look at the, whether you could get that electronically or not. You can get a lot of information.
Like, I went online to look at my, what I know happens to be a realty trust. My house is in, not there. But I know it's there.
All right, so, I mean, these are things we have to take a look at. I mean, I know there's people raising their hand out back. You can't really go into this and discuss this tonight. It's not on the agenda. I think we have enough information here. We'll take a look at it today, tomorrow, discuss with Jim. We'll try, we'll get back to you. Like you say, that like Jim explained, we're trying to put together a puzzle here. You know, none of this, none of the records for this were kept electronically. We don't have anything. It's, we're just going through paperwork to try to find this stuff. And then, yeah, then you say maybe the registry of deeds may help if it was open.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your listening. Didn't want to lead you astray.
No, I understand. Okay. And thank you for bringing this information for us. It's more of the puzzle for us to solve, you know, to help us.
Like you say, we're here to help. We're all trying to get to the same end, something positive. And we look forward to working with you. And hopefully, at the next meeting, we can at least come in and do a preliminary discussion and get direction by then of which way we should go so we can proceed forward in some direction. So appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, so I guess we could choose the two members. I was hoping to be on the, on the committee myself. But if you two feel strongly that you want to be there.
Well, if you want to be on the committee, I'll give you the carny cans, you know. You being in a chair, you might have more knowledge of what's going on.
Okay. Well, I thank you for that. Yeah. I would like to be on the, on the committee for this. You're certainly welcome to.
I can go to the meetings.
To go to the meetings and voice any of your opinions.
Can he sit as a member and not of the planning board or of the general public? Because he's only a.
Alternate?
Alternate at this point.
Yeah, that's something we could look into.
Would that be an issue with open meeting law?
Yeah, I have to take a look at that. You know, if you have a third member of the board, if you're just there as a finance member, not a member of the board, does that, how does that affect the opening?
But I think, I think the question was, he just wanted to be there as, yeah, as another person on the committee. But, and also a voting person on the committee too.
Okay.
Yeah.
I suppose that would have a lot to do with how the public turnout turns out for this too.
Yeah.
People apply.
Right, right.
It might not be fair, but, you know.
Could three members of the board sit on it?
Right, yeah, but it, yeah, it might be kind of overpowering to have three people on there.
The way I would put it, just leave it to the two right now. See what you can get for a turnout and then we can go from there. I mean, if you don't have much of a turnout, then I could step in.
Sure.
Because it wouldn't be an issue then.
Yeah. All right, so, Mr. Shea and Mr. Mackey will be on the represent the planning board.
And we're going to make a full-blown effort over the next week and a half to get applications and then.
We'll review those at our next meeting.
Will we be allowed, will we get them ahead of time so we can review all the applications? So we can make determinations at the meetings we can set up? Because I know they're, they're pressing for time for the moving forward on this and.
And I can put a deadline of Thursday before, say at noon time.
Yeah, perfect.
And that way I can email, if we get emails, I can email them to all the members of the board.
Because we let people know already that we were looking for people for this and that we were going to establish the board, so.
And we already have one applicant.
Yeah.
Right, so.
And we have one applicant, yeah.
Okay, so, so tomorrow I'll work with the select board office of getting that onto the town website to solicit applications to be members of the bylaw committee. So we want to call it the bylaw committee?
I would.
Yeah, I think so. Well, see, what, well, it's going to be the.
Are we focused on bylaws, zoning bylaws in general or just the TDR stuff?
I thought it was the TDR stuff.
Well, I think we're going to have, yeah, you're going to have to, well, we'll have to figure out what the priority is. You know, TDRs first and then some of the things that may go to the two-town meeting.
Community preservation as well as development.
We did have some zoning bylaw changes that were for solar projects. But I thought we, the committee might want to take a look at that just to make sure that it was.
Yeah, no, that makes sense too.
I mean, we'll take, because we had, we were going to take them to town meeting, but now we have a chance to even take a look at them.
Yes.
And I think it's better if everybody takes a look at this. We have a committee with more people to take a look at it. It represents the town. And that way there, when it goes to town meeting, it might be more acceptable to the public.
Absolutely, I agree.
And it could be that those that are on the, that would be on the agenda for fall town meeting, it could be, well, maybe we kick them off and have them come back for the spring town meeting.
I think the people with, like, the shorter town meetings too.
So, do we, do you want to go ahead and just call it like the zoning bylaw committee or study, bylaw study?
Study, review?
Yeah. And then that way, when we put it out there, we have.
Yeah, the zoning bylaw study committee, yeah, I suppose that would.
And then that kind of leaves it open so that, you know, we set priorities. But then later on, if something needs to be looked at, we can also address that.
Okay. Any other discussion? We'll move on if. Okay, other business, planning board member notes. Does anybody have anything? Oh, on that was community preservation committee representative. And we looked at it and Ellen was interested in being the planning board representative. If that's all right with everybody, that's the way we'll do it.
And that we make Ellen a representative to the CPC?
Thank you. Have a learning process.
I don't know if you have to vote on that or not, but.
Doesn't hurt.
It doesn't hurt, I suppose.
There's a motion on the table.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A representative.
Okay, so those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You're the person.
Thank you, everybody.
You're a fun group of people.
Very nice people, yeah.
I know of you. It should be good.
All right, anybody else have anything that they want to talk about this evening? Seeing nobody coming forward, planning director notes. So we're talking about complete streets, town solar and permitting RFQ.
All right, go to complete streets. We have, I'm still waiting for the signed state contract to get back to us. They're all working remotely, so it takes a little extra time to get that back. We do have the, so under that state contract, Serpin is our consultant working on our behalf. And so, you know, we've signed an updated agreement with them, you know, for the scope of work. So we do have that document back. And going to start in October and run through the end of September of 2021. Delayed with COVID. The next item is town solar. Back in 2019, a town meeting, an article was approved to study placing solar canopies over all the town parking lots. So we went ahead, we received a grant for $12,500 to hire a consultant to help us with that. We've hired Beacon Integrated Solutions to kind of run that study for us. And so, we started to kick off with COVID. Everything kind of got pushed back. But their contract ends at the end of next June. But we expect to have everything, you know, completed before then. And actually, probably have some recommendations for spring town meeting if there's a requirement for a vote on anything to, you know, have it in time for the spring town meeting. And so we're trying to set up a kickoff meeting next week. So, but for the most part, it's going to be town staff kind of looking at it.
Sorry to interrupt you. I just have a quick question. Will it be town-owned solar or is it going to be through an outside company owning it and we're just?
Well, the idea would be that an outside vendor would come in to construct it. But once we kind of go through the process, and it depends on, so there are some options where it might be more beneficial to the town to, you know, have it like direct solar into a building.
Yes.
But there may be other situations where you get more bang for the buck if it's sold to the grid. And so apart, you know, the nice thing about this consultant, I wish I had her on the phone right now with everybody to give a nice solar lesson. Because, you know, I came to town, knew nothing about solar and knew how to get it through the process, but didn't know the inner workings of it. So I have a, I have one of her slide, her slide, I can share it with the rest of the planning board members. But learned an awful lot just talking to her about how, you know, it's kind of the business side of solar works. Maybe ask her come and, well, maybe not come, but they can do a Zoom presentation from her just to get everyone up to speed.
Yeah, I mean, that was one of the questions that I would have about it as far as what cost benefit the town would get from putting these things up? And where exactly, I mean, is there, is there a thought right now of where they would be put up?
I believe they said the elementary, the police, the fire, the high school, the library.
And when I say where, like parking lots or?
Yes.
Because when I hear canopies and stuff like that, I'm thinking parking lots.
Right, parking lots.
Well, this, this was already approved at town meeting, I believe.
Right.
And this was all part of the police station and the elementary school.
That was a separate, a separate article, but yes, it was all approved.
Yeah, so this has all been approved, yeah. So this has all been approved, so it's nothing new.
Now, my discussions with the solar consultant, she said, look at all town properties. Just don't limit yourself to the parking lots. Because what you're trying to do is create bid packages that will make it worthwhile for a company to come in and, you know, have a good deal, you know, you know, a good two-way deal for both the town and the developer, you know, in order to put the facilities in.
We just want to be a little careful along, especially along Main Street with the appearance to maintain the rural character of the town. That's going to be a big sticking issue too with a lot of people.
Well, like I said, that's all been approved, all the positions of the canopies were all approved, I believe. Because I know that there was a discussion exactly about that.
Yes. A little group of design is what it, does that come back to us or?
No, I think it's already been done. I don't think we have any more to do with that now.
Well, so the county approved certain sites. The consultant's going to look at the feasibility of these various sites. And then maybe part of that is where there's, say, the, you know, elementary school on Main Street, which is highly visible, yet you have this big, huge parking lot that might be worth some value to a solar company. Maybe that's when you have some public input onto that to say, okay, we're proposing these sites in town. This is what this site will yield. And here are the scenarios, you know, power directly to the building or power to the grid. And so here's the kind of cost benefit of doing this. And I think at that point, there would have to be some sort of decision.
Yeah, now, the other side of that is, I mean, I've got solar at the house. And when I was going through all of our approval process from National Grid, there, there was an issue with the number of solar projects in the area that if, if the number of projects came too great, that National Grid had the authority to cut that off and say, no, we've got too much solar, too much power being generated in this area.
Is it National Grid or Eversource?
Yes.
Eversource.
Eversource in this area.
Yeah, whichever one. It's all, it all runs together, but we'll call it the electric company.
Right.
But they have the authority.
They're all of powerful odds, right?
Right, exactly. They have the power, they have the authority to mix your project. And so as far as the town, which I'm, that's one of those things that I don't quite understand why they would do, why they would, how they would have the authority to do stuff like that. But how would something like this affect people being able to generate their own power at home? And are we going to, is the town generating its own power? Or doing projects like this, adding power to the grid? Is that going to kill somebody else's ability to put in solar at their homes? And also given the way the new SMART program is designed, some of these, some of these, like folks with larger properties that want to put up extra solar panels can actually sell that, can actually attach to their neighbors and get their neighbors signed into it. And so they're providing power to more than just their house. So it is a, it's a, it's a big program and something like this. If that's, if that can affect that program and affect the citizens and their ability to get their power, it's a huge thing, something to think about.
I'll make sure that.
Yes, it does.
See if I can get you. For consultants, so you ask those questions. Because you know, you have, you know more than I know about that whole process, so.
Right.
I would defer having like, if you have a conversation with her.
We could take a look, yeah, take a look at this. But I thought this was already approved and this was all done and over. And I thought.
We only approved the town's ability to do it, but I don't, I, and I, just because I don't remember, I don't remember who's supposed to be in charge of all the aspects. So I don't know if we have any say in it whatsoever.
Not, I don't think so, not, not right now, but take a look at it.
You're saying it's already been approved that.
I believe so, yeah, yeah.
Where they're going to go?
I believe so, yeah, I think.
Well, the study of feasibility, there's a list in the 2019 article. Well, the study of the feasibility, there's a list in the 2019 article that lists all the different.
Places that would get it.
That would be, that would be studied, the feasibility of. So for example, you say, okay, well, the fire station, you know, went out here, and so, okay, well, is it really feasible, because on the front part of the, you know, entryway have fire trucks, and sometimes they're out there operating the equipment, okay, would that be feasible? Or then on, you say, okay, well, we'll do it on the backside, all right, well, you have a, you know, markings for a helipad there, so chances are that fire station wouldn't be feasible.
And they also have the training facility back there.
Right, yeah.
I mean, nearly the reason I bring something like that up is, have you seen anything set up in another town? Like, when you've gone by, have you seen any of this set up?
I have, yeah, if you.
And it looks good?
It, it looks like a canopy. I believe they've done this at Stonehill College in Easton, and they've also done it at the at the public parking lot in Hingham, in the Hingham Cohasset, and they put these solar canopy. So what 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 they're for is, is people park their cars under it, and so if it snows or rains or whatever, it gives you some protection. You can also walk through there to get to the train or whatever. But I thought the purpose of these, these canopies were that they were, and I could be wrong with this, they were going to be constructed, they were going to, they were, it's free to the town to have this done, it gives them vehicle protection. But the electricity and the the actual canopy is probably owned by the company that installs it. So the, so the town is just allowing them to use the land, but there's some benefit from the electricity, too, I think, that the town gets.
Right, no, I just didn't want them putting up steel I-beam canopies in the center of town that.
Yeah, I remember, we'll have to take a look at this, I mean, I mean, I don't, and I don't know if we really have any anything more to say with this or not, but I remember going through this discussion before.
Yeah, the ones I've seen are very easy on the others.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've only seen a couple of them, then, like, Rainham's got one, and they put in steel I-beams, and then they ran large spans of them, and I.
Yeah, I've seen them where they fix some mat and then the I-beam on there, and you could park underneath.
Looks like a normal carport.
Yeah.
Well, they had one or few, and it didn't really look good. I think if you had like one or two, but they had like five of them. It actually covered like the whole parking lot.
Right.
And it was like, oh, my God, what'd they what'd they do over there, you know? So I guess it's more like.
Well, in the Cohasset-Hingham MBTA station there, they covered like the middle of the parking lot, and they just ran it from one end to the other.
It's not in the center of town, though, you know?
No, it's it's off the road, but it's just not offensive looking.
Well, they got it in Falmouth, which they do behind the skating rink that they built, the whole parking lot, but the steamship. But they also have one that's on 28, a business on it, applied for it, and they gave it to them. They look so ugly, they won't do it again, you know? It just really not, doesn't suit the town's look. But what I'm saying is, like, the schools and stuff, out of sight, out of mind, no problem, I'm just talking like Main Street, you know? You put a brand-new police station up, you don't want to see all that hanging around it, right? Same with the fire station. But like you said, we don't.
What I remember, it was in the rear of the building, so you wouldn't really see it. I know in the police station, it was in the rear, but it was helpful to the police to have their their vehicles covered, and so that was, you know, part of it, yeah. So what else? I think we beat this to death. We'll have to take a look at it to see whether we have anything more to do with this or not.
One more planner notes. Just kidding. And then another one is the permitting RFQs. We've put out a request for quotations for permitting software, and so we put out the three different companies, and September 15th is the deadline for submission, so we're waiting for that, so just give you a heads up on that. And permitting software, in case anyone, it's kind of a way to kind of automate the permitting process in town. Most of the permits are processed by hand, and everything's paper, where a lot of these other communities have gone out, they have the permitting system so that, you know, here, you know, you process a permit, then you go to a logbook, you write it down, and then later on, someone takes the information from the logbook, puts it into the computer. And so in this case, once you issue the permit, it automatically counts the type of permit it is, and then it's easier to kind of track, you know, the amount of revenue you're producing as well as the number of permits you're issuing. And then, you know, the goal is to get our building inspections kind of first, so all the billing permits, all the electrical and, you know, gas and plumbing permits online, and then I'm hoping the next phase would be putting the planning board applications up online, so that anything that's submitted to the planning board would be up online and then viewable by the public so that, you know, they don't have to run down to town hall. And everything's kind of cloud-based, so that regardless of where you're at, you could access the information and look at it. Of course, it'd be controls to restrict who could make comments or, you know, that type of thing, so that's what.
More efficient, so.
That's what we're trying for. Hopefully, you know, a couple of systems I have heard very good things on. There's two main companies, and there are an equal number of communities in Massachusetts. You know, there's probably 60 under one company, 60 under another company, and then there's, you know, kind of a bunch of smaller companies out there, you know, working in another community. So at least I feel feel safe going forward. You know that it's worked in another community beforehand, so regardless of which one you get, you know, you can have a certain comfort level. And that is it.
All right. Thank you, Jim. So in our PACS, we have the minutes of 8/11/2020. So that's August 2, August 11th, 2020 meeting. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look those over. If there's any thing anybody would like to add or delete, otherwise entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve. Seconded.
So there's motion to approve with a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next meeting will be the 22nd, and so, and so entertain a motion for adjournment.
That's it. I have a question.
Sure, yeah, go ahead, long as it's short.
Actually, about two weeks ago, in the Capitol Report, they mentioned TDR, that it'd be something tonight, and it wasn't in your minutes, so eventually we didn't speak of it.
Right.
But as a citizen, I felt as if you're a little biased, you let them speak, but no one else, because it's not in your minutes.
Well.
So I'll leave it with that.
Yeah, I mean, I did, I didn't want, I don't want to offend anybody, but we really shouldn't have been talking about that anyway. It's not, it's not on the agenda. We will have more of a discussion. Jim and I and the board members have all the information that they gave us tonight. We'll look at it, we'll discuss it with Jim tomorrow, and we'll try to make a decision on what we're going to do, and we posted. They still have to come to more meetings where you can, you could talk about this. Yeah, I didn't, I mean, I just don't want to be talking about something that is not on the agenda and we shouldn't be talking about, and I I know I, you know, we let them speak. I, well, it was part of why we were forming the this bylaw committee, and that was one of the first things we were gonna, I did let them go on it probably a little bit too long, that's my fault, and I'm sorry for that. But please come, we'll, you know, keep keep posted on the on the meetings and, you know, and then you can say what you'd like to say.
You know, it's quite a bit on the TDR regularly when this room is spoken, is that back and forth, and pros and the cons.
Well, that's why we're forming the committee. You know, if you want to get on it, put an application, that's what we're trying to discuss, is how to go forward. So we weren't excluding you, we're just trying to figure out what the best way to present this to everyone in the town.
But I read it in the paper.
Right.
Showed up. Then it's gone in the meeting, then it's, but I get one side, something's wrong with that. Maybe I made a mistake.
Well, we, yeah, we, well, the thing is, is I guess we thought we were going to have them come before us tonight, but then at the last minute, we decided that since we didn't have all our information together about the mapping and everything else that we need, that we didn't really want to have them speak tonight until we we figured out exactly what the next step is is going to be. That, you know, I'm sorry for what happened, but, yeah, but you certainly have your time to to speak, you know, but when we when we have a.
I'd love to see you on the committee.
Yeah, we we will need citizens for the committee, so if you'd like to be on it, you can give Jim your name and address.
My one.
I mean, of course, this, you know, there'll be the committee, and then there'll also be when they present the project, too, you know, so there'll be two different things going on here. So we still, so do we have a motion for adjournment? We had a second?
We haven't had a motion yet.
Okay, need a motion for adjournment?
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, and Ellen, second. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone. Thank you.